Have the discussion with the county attorney. I'm going to read a statement that I prepared today. Before we begin this meeting, I'd like to give a little history of the events that have led up to tonight's meeting. The subject of the ball fields for our softball and baseball teams has been discussed at the school board level for many years in open meetings. This particular proposal has been discussed since October numerous times. At the current time, our baseball teams must split between home and away for varsity and junior varsity when we host, because there are not facilities at Lewis Young Park to facilitate both teams. This always leaves our junior varsity on the road and creates a staffing and logistics problem. Furthermore, the conditions at the fields at Lewis Young are inadequate at both. The scoreboards don't always work, the fields are in poor condition, and there are no structures for inclement weather, to name a few. The school district has approached the city of Lewisburg about possible improvements in the past, but there seems to be little interest. Some have suggested using district funds to improve those facilities, but since they are owned by the city of Lewisburg, a separate taxing entity, there are both legal and ethical concerns that arise. It has gotten to the point that our baseball coaches are considering playing all way games until a solution can be found. At our board meeting, at our October board meeting, Dr. Bierman brought up the subject of the ball fields once again. There was a lengthy discussion about the possibility of using a lease purchase to construct a fourplex for baseball and softball fields, as well as other alternatives. All of this would be on school-owned property south of Wildcat Drive that was purchased with the intent of putting in ball fields at some point in the future. That property was purchased along with the property that the high school and middle school now occupy over 25 years ago. Dr. Bierman was instructed in that meeting to work with our professionals to get drawings, estimates, and bids so that the board could review the feasibility of completing this project within our annual budget. The initial proposal from the architects came back with an estimate that was higher than we had anticipated and one that Dr. Bierman felt would put our district in a precarious financial situation in the future. At that time, Dr. Bierman asked Hollis and Miller to investigate other options. They came back with a scaled-back version of the original, one that moved the varsity fields across the street behind the middle school, north of Wildcat Drive, and repurposed the practice fields. This proposal would greatly reduce the amount of dirt that would need to be excavated, use existing parking that we already had in place for most of the spectators, use existing restrooms, and minimize the need to construct large-scale improvements on the south side of Wildcat Drive. Dr. Bierman visited with the family that owns the property, the house and the property on the northeast corner of Wildcat Drive and South Countryside Drive, about this proposal because it directly impacted on their property. The family that owns the property gave their blessing for the district to continue with the proposal. Dr. Bierman presented this proposal along with multiple bid alternatives and a detailed timeline to the board at our March meeting. He was then instructed to move forward with the bid proposal and to get approval from the city of Lewisburg for the possibility of this proposal. All bids with alternatives were presented to the board at our May meeting. Three separate motions.
Sarai, are you there? Hello? Sarai?
Right, a spam call.
Sarai?
Hey.
There you are.
All right, we're just, Mr. Furt is reading the statement, so.
No, I'm not, sorry. Sorry, folks, I know you want to hear me speak, but. All bids with alternatives were presented to the board at our May meeting. Three separate motions were moved, seconded, and approved by a six-to-one vote. The first motion was for the civil work and sand construction was selected to complete the bid with, to complete the work with a bid of $3,235,485.93. Several alternatives were left out because Dr. Bierman and the board deemed them to be either out of line or too costly. Dr. Bierman told the board that he would apply to the First Option Foundation for a grant to complete any alternatives that we would complete ourselves. The second motion was for the turf installation on the two varsity fields and the batting cages. This was not a public RFP, but rather a government contract bid and sealed bid. There were four bids and we selected the second lowest bid based on issues the lowest bidder has had occur with previous jobs. The bid was awarded to Legacy Sports Construction. The third motion was for the financing of the lease purchase. It was recommended that First Option Bank be used. They proposed a very competitive rate of 4.24% for a total of $4 million to fund this project. The payments would be $483,153.80 per year for nine years, with a final payment of $483,182.18, for a total of $4,831,611.38 with interest. Dr. Bierman gave us the history of our past lease purchase agreements and said that we had always been able to pay them off well before maturity, saving the district a considerable amount of money in interest. There was a lot of discussion about how this would be paid for out of the budget. It was agreed that all the money would come from the capital outlay funds. This fund is currently at eight mils, has been at eight mils for over 10 years, and there seems to be a consensus that the fund will remain at eight mils whether this project was approved or not. The district's comprehensive maintenance plan was also mentioned, and the majority of the board agrees that without this budgeted plan, it has guided us, guided our maintenance expenditures over the past four years, we would not be able to fit this into our budget. I also stated that this board and Dr. Bierman have zero interest to ever propose another bond for maintenance again. We approved the lease purchase agreement with First Option Bank. On Thursday evening, I was at the league track meet watching my son throw and received a phone message from the Miami County Attorney Kent Harding regarding a concern with the lease purchase. I immediately called Mr. Harding back, and he explained to me that he had received a phone call from a concerned citizen that we had passed a lease purchase agreement outside the scope of the law. He referred to Kansas Statute 10-1116(c) and was kind enough to send it to me. He also told me that he had tried to contact our legal counsel, Jessica Bernard, to discuss the situation. I was confused about how Mr. Harding had obtained Ms. Bernard's cell number, as only Dr. Bierman and the board members have that number. I discussed the situation with Mr. Harding, and he told me he thought he might have to get, go back and, we might have to go back and table the motion, then post our intent to enter into a lease purchase agreement and the paper for two consecutive weeks to fulfill our obligation to the law. I immediately called Ms. Bernard, and she asked me to send her the statute and have Dr. Bierman give her a call. I then called Dr. Bierman and let him know what had transpired. After both I and Dr. Bierman read the referenced statute, we were both puzzled to what part of the statute we might have possibly violated. The statute, which I had, which I had made available for the public, has four subsets to it, and the only one that both of us thought applied to us was the first one that requires a majority vote. And there are copies of the statute back there if anybody wants it. I sent Mr. Harding a text and explained my legal, my limited legal interpretation of the statute, and Mr. Harding disagreed, but wanted our attorneys to contact him so they could discuss it. I also researched any legal opinions pertaining to the statute and came up with one, which I sent to Dr. Bierman and had him forward to legal. Dr. Bierman and I both agreed that we would have our KASB attorney contact Mr. Harding because we were still not convinced of any wrongdoing, and we didn't want to incur a significant legal bill with Mrs. Bernard. Dr. Bierman reached out to KASB and KSDE and Dale Dennis on Friday to get their input. I was traveling to Salina for my daughter's college graduation and was in and out of contact for the weekend. Dr. Bierman was able to contact me on Friday afternoon and indicated that they all agreed that we had, that we had done nothing wrong and that we were fully within the scope of the statute. In fact, other districts have successfully completed similar projects using lease purchase agreements the exact same way that we, that have proposed. I called Dr. Bierman Sunday evening and told him I would like to meet with Mr. Harding on Monday morning. He agreed, and I contacted Mr. Harding, and we set up a meeting in his office at 9:00 a.m. on Monday. Mr. Harding explained to us that he thought we may have violated subset C of the statute. Dr. Bierman and I disagreed because the subset refers to the acquisition of land or buildings. Mr. Harding explained that it could be read to build a building and that the definition of a building is not very clear in the court of law. I referenced the opinion of Phil Klein, opinion by Phil Klein, as the only legal opinion that I could find pertaining to this statute. In that opinion, Klein referenced an opinion from Heckard Construction versus the City of Fort Scott. In that opinion, it states, and I quote, "When interpreting the language of a statute, the fundamental rule is that the legislature governs and that intent can be ascertained. Courts presume that the legislator, legislature expressed in its intent through the language of the statute, so when a statute is plain and ambiguous, the court must give effect to the legislator's intent as it is expressed. Ordinary words are given their ordinary meanings. A statute should not be read to add something that is not found in the plain words used by the legislator, legislature, or delete something that is clearly with the ordinary language used." Dr. Bierman responded, "I guess we are debating whether building is being used as a verb or pronoun, or a noun in this instance." Mr. Harding also explained to me that he had contacted Board Member Pat Apple to get my phone number and Ms. Bernard's phone number, which cleared up some confusion. Mr. Harding was very gracious in his explanation of the possibilities that lay before us. I don't want to put words in his mouth as he has, he was, has, he has been more than willing to come forward to our meeting tonight to explain to the board his interpretation of our options moving forward. With that, I'll ask Mr. Harding to step forward so we can have this discussion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Furt. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those people watching at home and those people behind me, good evening to you as well. Sincere good evening. I grew up here in Lewisburg. I graduated in '06, and at the time, I played a little bit of baseball, and I'm sure we'll talk about that at some point in the rest of the evening. I'll have some questions to start out with, and I'll get to those in a second. We have a lot to discuss this evening. But from there, I became an attorney, and as an attorney, much like I was here in Lewisburg, I dove right in. They asked me what I wanted to do first off, and I said death penalty cases, and so I've worked on those cases. And I am proud of the fact that I am in fact a trial lawyer. Many lawyers go to law school, they put all this on them, and they never once speak in front of a jury, and I've been doing that for a good long time. That being said, I have never been as conflicted, I have never been in a more difficult room than this one right here and on this particular issue. Some things never really change from fifth grade over here in Mrs. Woodlock's class when you go to the principal's office in the Circle Grove. To answer a few things, Mr. Furt mentioned the way in which I got the contact information. I contacted Mr. Apple because he's the only person on this board whose phone number I have. If any of you want my personal cellphone, I'll give it to you. I specifically asked him for Mr. Furt's phone number as well as your legal counsel because I believe you have a legal issue. After that, I had no contact with Mr. Apple afterwards, I had no contact before all of this, haven't had any contact since. I spoke to Mr. Furt, I tried to speak with your attorneys multiple times, and I have spoken with your attorneys. There's a lot of people in this room who have opinions that I have tremendous respect for, and as I've said, this is probably the most difficult job that I've done this far, and I have handled cases where people are facing life without so many times that I've forgotten at this point. This is the most difficult one here tonight. That being said, I do believe in all sincerity, as an independent individual who was raised here in Lewisburg, who believes, again, being highly conflicted between my love for baseball and also my love for this country and the pledge of allegiance that we set at the beginning of this, that this is a due process issue. This definitely touches on a due process issue, and I have come to you all openly with hands wide open this whole time. I'm not exactly used to that. Most of the time, when there's someone on the opposite side of me, my task is to beat them, and that's not what I'm here to do. I have never had anything but good things to say about the school district or this board. I left and I was gone for a good 10 years, and I know that the members in this board have been through a little bit of turmoil, politely, but I sincerely, honestly worry that with what you folks have been through, maybe you won't be able to open your minds to hear what I have to tell you or to try and stop a mistake and a problem before it comes to you. I do believe you are on that track. So let's talk about what brought us here. Well, we're talking about statute 10-1116(c). 10-1116(c) governs lease purchase agreements within the state of Kansas. It states that when or if a lease purchase agreement shall take longer than one year, it shall be approved by the members of the governing body. Now, today, I had to look further into the statute, and I do believe and talk to your legal counsel, I believe if you qualify under A, you qualify under D. I was kind of interpreting the statute and looking at it and saying, well, it'd be one or the other, as Mr. Furt mentioned it, but I believe D applies to B, C, and A. If the proposed agreements were termed C in the current fiscal year of the municipality, the agreement shall specify the following: one, the amount of capital cost required to purchase the item and paid by cash; that I'm going to describe as the principal, what it costs; the annual average effective interest cost, which I did, I have finally, I believe, and if you're okay with it, and we've had arguments over this, are you fine with 4.8 for a number?
Yeah.
800,000 in interest. Well, good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're at 4.8, and it also needs to include the maintenance and insurance and other charges exclusively of capital cost and interest cost. I'm not sure that your documents have that in there, and I didn't find out the interest cost total until tonight. I'm still honestly a little confused because I've watched the meeting that y'all had at least five times. If you want to know, you start talking about the baseball fields at 3722, and it ends at an hour and 19 minutes. I've watched this five times. I don't remember you ever mentioning the statute, and honestly, I'm a little confused as to the interest because the form that you put up there, I tabulated the numbers, and math is not my strong suit, that's literally part of the reason I became a lawyer, because I don't do math, but I think I added up more than that. You may want to be able to explain that. Just give me a heads up, and I have given you all heads ups throughout this. I'm not your enemy. I believe I told Mr. Furt that directly. I'm not your enemy. I'm here to try and help you. I didn't have to do any of this anyway, and I'm fully in favor of the baseball fields that you're looking to pass, but I want it done right. I want it done in support with due process, and unfortunately, this is a position that God's grand plan comes to me. I have to defend y'all's voting rights. This is something that falls within me. This is not a situation where I, as county attorney, have just said, hey, let's go mess with the school board because I don't have anything better to do at 7:30 on a Wednesday. I most definitely do. I am busy all the time, and I'm here because I'm trying to help you. But when I contacted Mr. Furt, I told him that I believe that you are infringing on subsection C. I got off track. I am in charge of ensuring all of y'all's voting rights. For all of you who have said really mean nasty things about me, it's your rights too that I'm fighting for here today. You may disagree with me on this issue, but I swear to you, at some point in my career, I'm going to be in a position where you agree with me. I am the one who has to come before these people and argue for due process rights when and if a due process right is infringed upon. It doesn't have to be trampled on, or spit on, or kicked into submission, it has to be infringed upon, and I do believe that you've done a little bit more than that with this due process issue. So I have to bring this before you all, I have to bring this in front of the court, partially because of who the plaintiff is. Who is my client? My client is the community as a whole. In issues like this, especially in small towns, there may be a portion of this community that has a little bit of sticker shock at 4.8 million dollars, but they might be afraid to stand where I have to stand in front of you all here today. I have to do that hard job. There may be some other people who unfortunately, for the wrong reasons, are just against baseball fields and happiness, but you know what? That's not what brings me here. It's due process, whether or not you all have complied with due process. I have some severe concerns that in this city or in any city, whether it be Paola, Osawatomie, Norton, Kansas, anywhere in Kansas, if someone told me a school board passed a 4.8 million-dollar construction project and they never posted any notice online or, pardon me, not online, out in the public, they did not post the notice, they did not provide any mechanism by which the people could challenge that, just on its face, that would probably cause people some concern. I mean, you're telling the people that they have no ability to challenge this. I'm not saying that they should, and I'm not saying that the baseball field shouldn't go through. As a matter of fact, I'm saying outright, if this goes to a vote, I will show up, I will vote, and I will vote for it. I, when this first came to me, I had a little sticker shock, I got to be honest with you, the number's high. But that being said, I love baseball, and I love this town, and I think it's a great thing y'all are doing, and I'm fully in support of it, but I support due process rights above baseball. In terms of how and why you may or may not have infringed upon the due process rights, well, I have also spoken to your legal counsel. If any of you have any questions throughout this presentation, if any of you have any questions for me afterwards, during, tonight, if any of y'all have any questions, I'm here. I've spoken to your attorneys, they have my personal cellphone, you all do. Call me and ask me any questions. I will answer them. I've spoken to your attorney. Now, if you look at this statute, I believe, under subsection C, you will be held liable for that. And you also need to understand two things. One, I'm not saying that you all are doing anything malicious. I'm not saying that you have intended to do anything wrong. As a matter of fact, I think honestly, y'all are probably wrong for the right reasons, and there may be other people opposed to it who might be right for the wrong reasons. That happens from time to time, okay? I think that you're wrong for the right reasons. You want to build this baseball complex, you want to give this to the community, but you have to do it correctly. Pursuant to subsection C, if the municipality is a campy school district or community college, the proposed agreement involves the acquisition of land or buildings, we'll come back to that a lot, is for a term exceeding the current fiscal year the municipality provides for annual payments within an aggregate exceeds $100,000, the governing body of such municipality shall first adopt a resolution stating its intent to enter into such lease purchase agreement. The resolution shall specify the total of all payments to be made pursuant to the agreement and the purpose for which such agreement is to be entered into. The resolution shall be published once each week for two consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation within the municipality if a protest petition signed by not less than 5% of the qualified voters of the municipality, as determined by a vote for Secretary of the State at the last general election, is filed with the appropriate county election officer within 30 days following the last publication of the resolution, no such agreement shall take effect unless approved by a majority of the qualified voters of the municipality voting at an election thereon. Might as well finish it out at this point. Any such election shall be called and held in the name provided in 10120, 10120, and unless there are two, or in accordance with provisions of the Maryland Valid Election Act, if no such protest petition is filed within the time limitations contained herein, the governing body of the municipality may enter into such agreements. If an election is held pursuant to a protest petition, the majority vote is cast in favor of the proposition, the governing body of the municipality shall have the authority to enter into such agreement. Now, let's break down what we know and what does apply. First off, is this over $100,000? You are 48 times above that. You are at 4.8. The governing body, and if it takes more than a year, you are, and I understand, and I concur, and I support the board, you're looking to pay it off in seven, but you're slated for 10. You're 10 times above that statute. In all of these words, we have boiled this thing down to gravy, wherein which we are arguing as to whether or not you qualify if this agreement involves the acquisition of land or buildings. In the beginning, we discussed the issue of acquisition. Frankly, unfortunately, I think that one's just an easy, easy gift. This is an acquisition. Right now, do you have a fourplex baseball, softball complex? No, you do not. At the end of this, will you? Yes, you acquired it. It's an acquisition. Council's an acquisition. For the purposes of acquiring land, that, that doesn't count because you already have the land, it's yours. Now, we get to this part about buildings. Let's talk about the issue with regard to buildings. I think a lot of people, especially if you want the baseball park, if you want the baseball field, you'd probably think I'm crazy thinking that a baseball complex could be considered a building for the purpose of the statute, and that is what we're determining, whether or not it can be a building for the purpose of the statute. There are two definitions that you might look at. One would be a verb. It is your buildings, it's things that you build. If you're building more than 100,000, or a building project that's more than $100,000 and it takes more than a year, you at least have to let the people know and have an opportunity to contest it. Some of you may think that's just beyond crazy, can't, there's no way that could possibly be. Well, that's fine, I'll move on and I will just let you continue to think that, but let's look at y'all's definition, which, would anyone have any objection if I said building, we're going to define as four walls and a roof? Is there anybody here disagrees with that? Anybody got a different definition? I'm going to use your definition, four walls and a roof. Anybody got a problem with that?
No.
Okay. Four walls and a roof. Your definition, under the context of the statute, results in really ridiculous outcomes potentially. It really does. First off, the word is plural, it's buildings. So you could say, we can build as many single buildings as we want. I can build the Empire State Building, and I don't have to provide notice to anybody because that's only one building, it's not plural. If I build two buildings, then I have to provide notice. We all would look at the statute and say that that's kind of crazy, but then let's look at what you could, well, what you could and what you couldn't do with that interpretation. If I was to say, what is the smallest building that you could build that you would have to post notice on? And I have thought about nothing else for seven days, people. What do you think is the smallest building you would probably have to provide notice on? I'm going to name mine, I think it's a greenhouse. I think it's a greenhouse. You look at the backside of LHS, you got a little greenhouse. We live in 2025, things are outrageously inflated, and greenhouses these days, I have to imagine you can put a lot of equipment in there, and you could probably crack a hundred grand in a greenhouse, I would think. That's four walls and a roof, and it's on school property. You would have to, unquestionably, if it took more than a year to pay that off, you would have to post notice on that, on something as little itty-bitty as a greenhouse.
But Ken, on that, we did build that, and it was over 100,000, but we didn't do a lease purchase for it, so we didn't have to follow it. We submitted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think you did wrong with it. Yeah, I was saying, if you used a lease, if you used a lease purchase agreement, if you use this mechanism, then you'd have to do that. And like I said, I'm not, I'm trying to be as upfront, open and honest as I can be with y'all. I don't have to have the most uncomfortable seat in the city of Lewisburg tonight, okay? I'm here for you, and we'll come back to that because there's another person that could be here, and we'll talk about it. I chose this seat. Let's talk about what you could build, ridiculous things that you could build. Four walls and a roof, that don't meet that qualification. At first, I thought of what I think to be a lot of ridiculous examples, but I tried to think of what would be actually a good example for you. Well, everybody who's from here and been here knows that we are now the only town in all of Miami County that doesn't have a golf course. Our golf team has to go other places to play golf. With your definition, could you build a golf course? Because I'm going to tell you right now, it's going to crack well over a million dollars if you were to build a nine-hole golf course by the time you're done with it. Could you do the same thing you're doing here? Could you say, we're going to use the middle school as the height, as the clubhouse? We don't even need a clubhouse, we don't even need parts, we're just going to build a golf course. Do you think that that would be met with any opposition? And with your definition, do you think you could do it? I think you definitely could, and I think if you went ahead and you just built a golf course with your definition, the community would probably be outraged. Let's think about another example, what else could you do? Well, it's kind of ironic, I just found out that they cut the ribbon on the updating of the Aquatic Center over there, and so now we don't need a new pool, but if someone was to say, our pool is aging, and you wanted to build an Olympic-sized swimming pool, with your definition, could you do that? Yes, and the community would have nothing that we could do about it. There would be no way that anyone would be able to contest, petition, anything. All we'd be able to do is come here and talk to you all as I'm talking to you now. That's all they could do. You would just win one rough shot over this and build a pool in that same area we're building. And last but not least, because this is one that I'm actually very much as county attorney focusing on, not for the USG 416, but I'll come back to it in a second, but could you build Starlight Theater? Could you build an amphitheater? Could you build a giant amphitheater and say, well, we've put together really good plays, and we, we have excellent choir and band here, we want an amphitheater? Could you do that without any ability for the public to object with your definition? I think you could. And frankly, that is a problem because I don't know if any of you know this, I am painfully well aware, but there's this thing called Dance Festopia down in south Miami County. It's basically hippie drug disco techno music fest. It happens, I couldn't believe it when I moved back and they told me it was in Miami County, it's right next to my favorite fishing spot, 399th. They blast music, they do drugs for a week, we have all kinds of problems, between assaults, sexual assaults, all kinds of stuff, I'm heavily against it. If the county goes to move to build to keep that going, wouldn't you all as voters want me to step in and give you the opportunity to have to say? And if they told me, well, this isn't a building, it's an amphitheater, it's a stage, it's this, that, or the other, they're sleeping in their tents, this doesn't qualify, wouldn't that upset some of you? It's an issue of due process, and if you are providing the community with what you believe to be It's an issue of due process, and if you are providing the community with what you believe to be adequate notice, well, actually, more importantly, legally required notice. So, Mr. Foot, you quoted that portion of the, and it's not a statute, it's just simple statutory construction, it's one of those statutory interpretations. It's not specific to 101116C, it's not specific to lease purchase agreements, it's just how the court is going to interpret the statute. The court is to look at a statute, and if no ambiguity exists, if there is no argument on any of the words, then it is to take the words at face value and give them the common meaning. However, we've already talked about the fact that there is a disagreement, whether you're on this side, that side, think I'm crazy, think not, there's a disagreement here, that's an ambiguity. When that happens, the court then looks to the drafter's intent of the statute. The statute, I would posit to you, just based on its face, is very clearly meant as a notice statute for when and where government entities go to spend tax dollars of over a hundred grand in over a year, and then we argue on the buildings. This is a, this is a notice statute that you have to provide notice. This does not automatically result in a vote, it does not automatically put, you know, terminate the baseball project. As I said, if it goes to a vote, I'll vote for it. I will definitely vote for it. I'll recruit people, I'll campaign for you for this project. But that's the issue, it's American, we have to vote on it. The people are, I cannot allow the people to just receive this news from you all and have nothing that they can even do to try, try for it. Because while we may all be angry with baseball here today, we might very well not be in favor of something else later. And I have to worry about this as an elected official as well. You will not sit in this seat forever. One day, it will be someone else regardless. It could be four years, it could be any time. Y'all ain't gonna be here forever, politics are volatile. What precedent are you setting for the school board? And are you doing something that is helping and bettering the community in terms of their belief and their trust in the school board that you're telling us everything that's going on and giving an opportunity? Are you leaving that for the person that takes that seat next? Because the person that takes that seat next might be interested in that golf course, or might be interested in that swimming pool, might be interested in any number of things. But what you are putting through with this 4.8 million building construction project, wherein which the community has zero legal avenue to challenge it. I find that, to put it mildly, troubling. But when the court looks at the purpose of the statute, I've looked at more, and just to give you a heads up, and run all of this by your attorney. Have your attorney call me, and I'll run it by her, and then have it run by you, we'll sit down together, that's fine. There have been four cases wherein which the appellate court or the Supreme Court of the state of Kansas has interpreted a situation wherein which a government entity was using 10-1116C to pass a project, not like this, but just pass a project in general. Of those cases, the four, zero say that you don't have to post notice. No one has ever gone before the appellate court or the Supreme Court on this issue of 10-1116C and not been told that they have to provide notice. Just keep that in mind, our case is unique, and it is unique. And I have independently, before you and I all met and invited you to my office, I have independently reached out to the Attorney General's office, I filed a formal request for an advisory opinion on whether or not the buildings is a verb, or a noun, or how it is to be interpreted. To be honest with you and everyone else, and I have them this whole time, I don't know that we're gonna get an answer until. I've been told it can take up to six months. I don't know that you're gonna get it quick. So if you're gonna wait on it, I don't. But what I will tell you also is that these duties come down to two people, they come down to me or the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General's office didn't go to Lewisburg, Kansas. Lewis, you, the Attorney General's office doesn't have people who work in the school district. The Attorney General's office doesn't love this district the way I do. If any of you feel that I am conflicted, I will call them and send this to them. I have given that opportunity to your leadership. If you don't want me involved in this, I don't wanna be in this hot seat either. But if I'm not here, you're gonna deal with somebody who answers to Chris Cobach. If that's how you wanna do it, you can have it your way. But I will choose this hot seat for this town, for me to be the best representative. And as far as looking at the intent of the statute, folks, I've looked into that, I've read all four of these cases, I've read every single advisory opinion. Of the advisory opinions, five of them said you need to pay, or pay, you need to post. One of them, I can't remember, they found some other outside avenue. Tell your lawyer, look on Lex next, it's under secondary sources, you'll find all Attorney General opinions on this issue. But in the case of, this, this, I think is really honestly gonna be the court's interpretation of the intent right here. So for this, you're gonna look to Unified School District number 207, works as Northland National Bank. For the record, that's found at 887P2, 1138. Also, 20CANF2, 321. It's a 1995, 1994 court of appeals opinion. This was back when this law was kinda sorta somewhat taking shape. The court said that in the 1990s, the Kansas Legislature added the following conditions, if applicable to lease purchase agreements per municipal under the cash basis law. If the proposed agreement is for a term exceeding the current fiscal year of the municipality, it shall be approved by a majority of vote of all members of the governing body. If the proposed agreement is from a term exceeding the current fiscal year of the municipality, yeah, sorry, pardon me. The agreement, exceeding the current fiscal year of the municipality, the agreement shall specify the following. The amount of the capital cost required to purchase the item if paid for in cash, two, the average annual effective interest cost, and three, the amount included in the payments for service, maintenance, insurance, or other charges exclusive of the capital cost and interest cost. I would posit to you all, though, come back to this case, that's just generally responsible financial review. If you go to buy a car and you're irresponsible, you buy it on the sticker price and you say, I don't know anything else. A responsible buyer says sticker price, what's the interest, what's the maintenance, what's the insurance, can I afford this? You disclose that so that the people can make a decision. The legislative history of this provision is also significant. By the late 1980s, there was concern that the lease purchase agreement, agreements authorized by the 1980 amendment were not subject to sufficient controls. A 1988 Legislative Interim Committee expressed concern that there is a need for limitations of safeguards on lease purchase agreements, such as requiring public notice, a public hearing, or some type of debt limit. And this is from a report on Kansas Legislative Interim Studies to the 1989 Legislature, page 349. The 1990 legislation arose out of Senate Bill 727 and was drafted to be, and I'm quoting here, drafted to be restricted and give the people a chance to have a hearing and request a vote on certain lease purchases of lands and buildings. Minutes of House Committee on Local Government, March 19, 1990. The problem the legislature was dealing with was summed up by testimony before the House Local Government Committee by Butler Butts, Department of Administrative Training Supervisor for the Municipal County Section, wherein which they quote, "Lease purchase agreements do not require voter approval, as do most bond issues. Thus, some view lease purchase agreements as loopholes. Because while the long-term obligations they create are similar to those in bond issues, the lease purchase agreements can be used without voter approval." This is why they created this statute, was as a limit, as a check, as an, as an issue of notice to the people. It is to prevent, as they put it here, using lease purchase, lease purchase agreements as a loophole to get around a bond issue. Now, I am not saying that's what you're doing. I am not saying that's what you're doing. I am trying to tell you all that Kansas is probably the most highly regulated and ridiculously stringent statutory construction I've ever seen in my life. It's insane. If you don't think anybody's watching me as county attorney, and if it's not possible at some time, you just don't know that something's out there, yeah, it happens. And I think that's part of what happened with the board here on this one, is that you just didn't know you were walking into this. But they put this in place as a check to where you have to provide notice, you have to do those due process things. And I think that that is the lens in which they're gonna look at this. And if that's the lens at which they're looking at this, you may not want to agree with me because you want the baseball fields, I want the baseball fields, but I would actually say that the verb buildings probably makes more sense. Because it doesn't make any sense to me that y'all could build a golf course, amphitheater, or a swimming pool and not have to tell anybody you're doing it, but yet if you build a greenhouse that's 20 by 20, you might have to post it in the paper and have a vote. It doesn't make any sense. Whereas from a voter perspective, as a citizen perspective, if on the other hand it says any construction projects, buildings that you're building, that would seem to make sense, especially when for me, the primary aspect is the money and the time. You're at 48 times the minimum, 4.8 million dollars. Over 10 years, maybe seven hopefully. But at best, you're, at best, you're 45 times above the minimum, and you're seven times the minimum on the time. When in doubt on that, as an elected official who is responsible for enforcing due process and voting rights, I can't sit back once I know about it. I have to look into it. Now, I have given this situation, and I swear to you, and I have spoken with you in person, here now, I have given you what I believe to be the most generous view of it. Is there a way that this can go through without us having this conversation? I don't know that we're there, I really don't, I don't think that we're there. I don't think that that's gonna fly. And honestly, if I didn't care about you all, I wouldn't tell you this. Your worst-case scenario is not that I win a trial. That is not your, your worst-case scenario. Your worst-case scenario is that we file the injunction, which is either gonna come from me or the Attorney General's office. We go to trial, we go through all that headache, all that heartache, we do all those things, I cross-examine all of you. Well, maybe not all of you, definitely Mr. Bierman. I cross-examine all of you, and you know what, your high-powered attorneys, and that you're paying a lot of money, they win. They beat me, they win, they're right. That's the worst-case scenario, because at that point, this is now ripe for appeal. It is a circumstance wherein which USD 416 could be made an example of for the state. It's 2025, people, voting rights are kind of a hot-button issue, and so is unchecked government spending. I fear that if I lost, this may very well be a strawberry. That's your worst-case scenario. Trying to get out in front of them. There just is no winning, there's no winning on the issue of voting rights either. If you tell me, if you tell me, well, we're not subject to the statute, okay? I can understand that, but from the people's perspective, that's you saying you're not due any process, we don't owe you any notice. You're not entitled to it under the statute. You could be right, but I'm telling you right now, your constituency in Miami County, and specifically Lewisburg, Kansas, is not gonna be good with that. I don't think that's gonna play well. If you tell me that the vote's gonna pass, and I think it will, I'll vote for it. If you tell me that it's gonna pass, then they're gonna say, well, why not give it a vote, why not give it a try? If however, you say that you're afraid that it might not, well, you're in much worse position. It just doesn't get any better. You have to provide notice. And I think to some extent, if we go to trial on this, I'd use your own video against you. Y'all said that there was misunderstanding about this project in the community. You said that some people said it's a done deal and we've already signed off. Some people said it's so many millions, somebody said it's this, that, and the other. Y'all admit that the, the public is ill-informed. That's a notice issue that lends to believe that maybe you need to provide notice if you want to qualify for the statute. And if, when the Attorney General's office, or when those people come in to look at what you've done, you can do what I'm doing with you all now and say, I did everything that I could. You need to do that. I will tell you that I will be happy to put out a press release that I believe to be accurate. I'll let you all review it. I'll put it out on my personal Facebook page. I will campaign for this program. I, when I played in Lewis Young, if I'm being honest, the only complaint that I had about your, your program here is that I'm a bit of a traditionalist, and I like dirt and grass. Let's just be the old-school baseball guy and be, baseball's not the same if you can't say rub some dirt on it. But, that's why I'll complain about the project, I'm fully in favor of it. But I can't turn a blind eye to due process, and I don't know that it's been compliant with, I mean that necessarily, regardless of what anyone, anyone thinks. I don't know that you've done it, and I'm very afraid of that. And I also know that I need to err on the side of the voters. They may hate me for it, but I need to err on the side of protecting their due process rights. And I think if you were to tell anyone anywhere that there was a school district that unilaterally passed a 4.8 million dollar construction project, and there was no legal notice and no opportunity to contest, that even just on its base would probably be problematic. As I get further into this issue, it just gets worse. As I understand it, the, the board tried to pass a bond previously, or the city tried to pass a bond? How much, when, when was that?
Well, the rec tried to pass a, it wasn't specific to the fourplex, but it was, they tried to raise their mill rep, mill rep lobby up, and they were gonna try to build a fourplex with that fund, with those funds if they could. That was four years ago, three years ago.
How much approximately was that?
Well, it was, it was gonna be a mill, it was gonna, it was gonna allow them to raise their mills to four. The school district, before I was on the board, and that was during COVID, they had a, there was a, what was it, 6.49?
6.7, second ballot question.
Aye, yeah. Okay, well, if y'all, if, if someone from an Attorney General's office or a judge were to look at this and say, well, the city tried to pass a bond, it didn't pass, and then they tried to pass a lease purchase agreement, they didn't provide any notice. I'm a little concerned as to how you might be viewed.
Yeah, but just to be clear, the city didn't try to pass a bond, it was the, well, ORC tried to pass a resolution to raise their mill, is what they did.
Got you, got you. I'm not saying that's what you're doing, I'm saying that it's 2025, and that, that there's people that are gonna wonder. The other thing is, as long as you don't post notice, that you sort of somewhat leave yourself open for attack. If however, yes, if, can I finish that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
What I would tell you is, meet this thing head-on. Meet this thing head-on, put it out there, explain that you have budgeted well, and that you care about this community, and you budgeted to be able to do this. And then afterwards, you don't have to worry about what you do. You can build the buckies of concession stands for crying out loud, and no one can say otherwise if the voters don't vote against it. If you tell the people that they're not paying any more increases in taxes, that this is a great facility, and it's a great thing, and that the band can use it, and that the whole school can use it, but you have to afford due process, and you have to say those things. Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sincerely asking because I don't know the answer. You know, you've said there needs to be a mechanism for people to have an opportunity to voice their opinion, and I, I sincerely don't, don't know. But I mean, the fact that we have discussed it for several months, and that it has been on our agenda that's posted, I mean, where does, where does that fall?
I don't think that it satisfies it. The reason being, I'll be honest with you, this is the first board meeting I've ever watched in my entire life. That doesn't mean that I'm unique. And I've kinda went around town, not everyone, I'm not door knocking or anything, but I ask people when I have a chance, do you know anything about this? And they just don't know anything about it. People don't watch board meetings enough. I don't think that for 4.8 in 10 years, in a massive, well, I'll, I'll take that word back. For 4.8 million dollar construction project, you're gonna have to do more than just the board meetings.
So, so what would that look like?
You gotta post it in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks.
Right, right, I, I understand with the resolution, but I mean, had, had we done it differently, what, what do you think that would have looked like, like hosting an open house, or a town hall, or?
No, if I were you, the law, the good thing about the law is, when you have, when you have a disagreement, you can sort of somewhat fall back on it. We have a dispute over buildings and what counts as a building, but the law here provides you the answer. You post it in the paper for two consecutive weeks, that's all you have to do. And I mean, when, I'm on the bone out here, when you do that is up to you. Just because you wait more than 30 days to vote doesn't mean that you're still compliant with the statute. If you had in October thrown out two little ads in the paper that nobody reads, you would have been fine. And I'm not saying you should have known, that I'm just saying hindsight's 20/20.
But they, they would still also have to have the petition signed correctly?
They would have to do that to challenge. In order for them to challenge, you have to post notice, which statutes are slow, courts are slow. We all work at the rate of hours, minutes, and days in our personal lives. Courts work at the rate of weeks and months, they haven't caught up yet. Two weeks in the paper is not really even, honestly, as a person, I'm not sure that I would count that as really trying your hardest to notify everybody. You know what I mean? Nobody really is paying any attention, but it's still legal stat, legal notice in statute. That's all you gotta do. Post it for two weeks, wait 30 days, and then you can vote.
Is the 30 days business or calendar days?
I think it's calendar, is how I interpret it.
So it is calendar.
That's how I interpret it.
How would the petition be signed?
It's a good question, to be honest with you.
I don't, I don't think somebody opposing should go door-to-door and get petitions.
Well, first off, I'm not gonna help anybody trying to draft a petition because I'm in favor of those. I'm not gonna sign any petition either.
And would they have to go to the courthouse to do it, or do you know?
To be honest with you, I don't know, they just recently didn't want to pay a lot. I think, I know that there are requirements like what this has. There's requirements, I know you have to have a name, you have to have a valid address, phone number, all those things they have to check out. Has to be 5% of the, the school district, which Mr. Foot told me he had calculated at 388-ish.
I think it was 388.
Okay, I'm not saying that's the number, I'm saying I'm terrible at math and I don't know the numbers. I have no reason to dispute that, because I did my own kind of check on what I.
I was just going off of the last election, when Mr. Apple was elected, I think there were 17, nine people.
I have no reason to doubt you.
I think it might be the last Secretary of State's race.
Yeah, I think that's what it says again.
Is that what it is?
I think so.
It's 5% of, if a protest petition. Well, it's five percent of, if a protest petition signed by not less than five percent of the qualified voters of the municipality as determined by the vote for Secretary of State at the last general election is filed with the, the appropriate county election officer within thirty days, following the last publication of the resolution, no such agreement shall take effect until, or rather, for me, unless approved by a majority of the qualified voters of the municipality voting at the election thereon.
So it's the Secretary of State?
Nooo. Well, yeah, in terms of determining the population for the purposes of the five percent tabulation, yes, it's the Secretary of State vote, uh, tabulation of last general election.
Okay.
In terms of where they term it in at, that would be the local county clerk, which would be more of a cross-street for me. As far as what specifically it looks like.
That would be a question to Laura Appner in her office.
Yeah, yeah.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Just to confirm, um, obvi- obviously, so Miami County Republic would be the newspaper of general circulation.
Correct.
In the minutes, thousand.
Yes.
Is what we're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lewisburg here went under and now it is Miami County Republic that is the appropriate paper.
What happens if the Miami County Republic goes away?
Good question. That's a good question.
Cause I mean, there are counties that don't have newspapers.
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. It's a good question. I don't know.
What about, I, I, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I would be interested to know who the concerned citizen was and only for one reason. As far as I know, no one sitting at this table, I think the only person that maybe I have, haven't asked this question of would be Pat, but no one has received complaints or concerns from anyone. So I would be curious to know if you can tell us who that is. And it, it, cause it's disappointing to know that they didn't feel like they could come to their.
Even if I could, I won't. The reason being, my position as a county attorney, it's my job to be on this hot seat here tonight. It's my job to be here. I represent all those people who may very well be talking with their husbands, their wives, when they're at home and they say, man, four-point-eight is ridiculous. I mean, I'm talking for all those people who say, you know what? I don't like the lights and the idea of the lights. I don't like the idea of foul balls flying on the way onto the road when I'm driving by. I don't like this, that or the other. There's any number of complaints, but this is a small town and it's pretty hard to do what I'm doing.
Have you just received one concern? I would just like, like, I don't feel like the public's been ill-informed. We've been talking about it since the start of the year. I think the public has been intentionally misinformed by some individuals.
It's quite possible.
Um, so.
It's quite possible, but here's the thing. If you don't come out and if you don't squash it, especially when you have a statute like this, it's not, it's not gonna come down on them. It's gonna come down on you. I don't know any better advice I can give you.
Mr. Harding, I know when you met with Mr. Foot and I on Monday.
Yeah.
As you had said, you had watched the previous board meeting and then that, and talked about, you know, asking me to see what it costs to turf our current soccer field, which we just beat ball tonight on.
Hey.
And, uh,
Go Cats.
So I had just asked you, I mean, would, would that be okay?
Yeah.
You shared that you didn't fill, I felt like that that did not fall under here because that would be an improvement of that existing field.
That's how I interpret it. I, my issue with this is you're building an entirely new complex. That's not business every day. Now, you mentioned the turf at the football field. Considering my brother's the height, the football coach, I'm obviously continue to be conflicted and honestly, I think it'd make it easier if this was a football issue as opposed to a baseball issue because at least you'd know then that there's probably not being completely genuine with you all. The way I view it, changing the turf on a field that's, that's an addition, that's a modification, upgrade. You're, you're modifying something that's already there. And so I think that falls under the acquisitions aspect of this. You're not, when you redid the turf on a field, which is, I understand that there were some people in the community who were a little upset with that, the lack of notice at that point. I could be wrong.
The football field?
The, yeah, the, uh, the turf, of the lease purchase agreement with the turf. I could be wrong, but I heard some people were a little upset that they didn't receive any notice on that. I think you're perfectly good on that. The reason being, you had a football complex before you did the turf.
And then you'd also shared Monday, if we took those two south fields and redid those, so put all the improvements that you, we've shared on those two, you, even though those would be same price tag, you would be fine with that because those are improvements to those two builds as well.
It comes down to the issue acquisition. I've been saying for years that y'all ought to just use them as practice fields, uh, or at least build them up to be something that you could use. I've been saying for years.
That was, that's what our initial thought was. It was just gonna be too, too costly.
That is not good, uh, actually initially, in fact, uh,
I think you can do it because you've already got it. The way I would look at it, like, let's say you had a classic car. Anybody ever seen an old Chevelle? They're all over the place. Most of them are more new parts than they are Chevelle.
But, so I guess the follow-up, so the facility, area that we are proposing, there currently is a ball field on there.
Yeah.
We currently march practice banned on it.
Yeah.
We practice football and soccer and track on this facility.
Yeah.
When this project's done, all those things are listed are going to take place there. Is that not an improvement?
I'm sorry, run that by me again.
Okay, so we currently, in this land that we own.
Yeah, you got the two practice fields, yeah.
Now, on the north side, we have a ball field there.
I don't. You're talking about the one, you're talking about the T-ball field?
We have a ball field there that our kids are out there playing on.
Okay.
If you go by, Mr. Losi's out there in middle school PE quite often.
Mm-hmm.
Our high school band marches out there. Our football team practices there. Our soccer team practices there. Our track team practices there. When this project's completed, those five student groups are going to be doing the same thing out there. Is that not an improvement to this area?
It's not the area. You're, you're trying to look at it as the town as a whole. You're building a whole complex. You're building a four-plex that you didn't have.
Building a four-plex. Building two.
A two-plex? Okay, pardon me. Then, yeah, as long as you're building a two-plex, then you need to post the notice. If you're building something you didn't have before, but if you're just improving something that's already there, I think you all can improve, you all could do what you're looking to do with a lease purchase agreement on the practice field that you have. You could do that. You're telling me it's not costly?
Well, we, we can't add two more fields there on that side at the street.
Um, okay.
Because it's, it's more costly.
We need, we need four fields. If we only go and take care of those two, then we still have the same issue. We need four fields. Our JV and varsity play.
Yeah, yeah, so you can have two teams going at the same time.
Instead of
I get it.
in Tonganoxie or out at Louis Shell. That splits our fans, our coaches, our players.
I think I get it. I still, I don't know that I understood your question at this point, but if it comes back to the notice issue, I didn't, I'm just figuring out all this and I've watched the meeting five times.
Well, I mean, I think the question is, like, we are already using those that field for an intended purpose and would this not be considered an upgrade for, versus building something brand-new there since we're already funded for things? There, I mean, there's a field there, so technically we would only be building one field if we're improving the field that's already there.
Somebody once told me, when it comes to fundamental rights, at the end of the play, you do not want to have chalk on your cleats. I don't know that you wanna flirt with a lie on this. And y'all wanna, y'all make your own decisions. I'm not gonna work. You got legal counsel, they're good. Safe option is to put it out there. You wanna get creative, I'm gonna get a letter. I'll actually, most of the simple songs.
Basically, you're saying we need to notify the community well, while they want to petition and then put it to a vote.
If they, if they're
Too good. According to this le, this legality.
And the earliest it could go on the ballot would be November.
Yeah.
And so I don't know honestly what that does. I've not talked to Sands and Legacy. I doubt they hold their bids that long. So there, I don't even know if they would hold theirs at all, so we potentially have to rebid the entire thing. Fair minimum, I would think they would increase their cost, but like I said, I have not talked to them until after proceedings tonight. If we start in November instead of June and July, which was the plan, we're not playing on those bills next year. I mean, I highly doubt it. Maybe they can get them finished from, you know, we told them they had to be substantially completed by February fifteenth, so November to March, if we give them another month, I don't know, depending on what winter. So those would be the concerns. It's delays another year and potential higher costs. Now, instead of four million to four-point-two, four-point-four, because of escalating costs.
I get it. But I also think that some of you have been on this board for quite some time. You know that generally when you're going through with a project, you don't hear the complaints until it's done. I don't know that you wanna move forward with this and finish it. So you've got a problem. The other issue is, again, I'm just, I have, I have tried to help you all as best I can. In twenty twenty-five, with voting rights being what they are and checkup spending being what it is, it's hard for you guys. And I would really honestly hate, here are the four cases on this issue involving the statute. Northland National Bank versus USD four-fifty-three. USD three-fourty-three versus Century Office Pro, Productions. State X-Rail Hecht versus City of Topeka. That's the only non-school board one on that one. They were buying a helicopter. Unified School District number two-oh-seven versus Northland National Bank. They're all schools. I would really hate to see Unified School District four-sixteen.
Would that be versus you? The county, those were all against another entity, a bank, it sounded like.
Against the state.
So it'd be against.
Against the state.
So that'd be the first of its kind. Well, those four though were against the bank and entity. I got, can I repeat, can I repeat, you said that?
The three school districts were against the bank and Century Office Productions. That one was interesting and that's why I think honestly, again, I hate being the bearer of bad news. I think D applies and I don't believe you've done D either, so this thing may already be DRT. But that was what happened in that one. That one, they were, uh, the lease purchase agreement, used a lease purchase agreement to purchase copying materials. The school district became upset with the service that they were receiving. It was actually the school district that tried to invalidate the, uh, lease purchase agreement. The court agreed with them that even under subsection A, you have to comply with subsection D. I don't know, respectfully, I don't really believe you've done that. So this
Can you explain that on subsection D? What, what exactly are we not complying with there?
So subsection D, if the proposed agreement is for a term exceeding the current fiscal year of the municipality, the agreement shall specify the following. The amount or capital cost required to purchase the items if paid for by cash, the principal, the annual average effective interest cost, the interest. The amount of, uh, the amount included in the payment for service, maintenance, insurance or other charges exclusive of capital costs and interest, which would just be maintenance. You have to incorporate those within the agreement. I know where you're going with this. The court has already said that if they're in various different places and you just say, well, they're in the documents, you know, in the documents, in there somewhere. The court has already said that doesn't count for notice for section D. You have to have one section that says, this is the principal, this is the interest and this is the maintenance interest cost. It has to be in the agreements.
So we need, we need to include maintenance and insurance on there?
The statute, yeah. And in all, in all sincerity, again, I hate being the bearer of bad news. That's irregardless, in my opinion, irregardless of B and C. The other thing is, it's kind of like when you purchase a house nowadays, your, your mortgage company will say, we will set up the insurance on it because they want to insure their asset. Normally, when you do a lease purchase agreement, that company will kind of do the same and they will tell you, hey, you need this little box that says that this is a lease purchase agreement entered into by the USD four-sixteen. This is the principal, this is the interest, this is the maintenance, just to cover all bases. I'm not saying you haven't done that. I haven't seen all the documents. I don't know. But if you're just gonna say, well, on this document is the principal, on this document is the interest, and then over here is the maintenance. So I haven't heard, the court in one of these cases is going to look through it and say, no, that is, you need to have a specific, this is what this is.
It's gonna be an estimate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all you can do.
Well, let me ask you this. We go down the path of trying to cure this with a resolution, notice in the paper, uh, thirty-day waiting period. Does that cure it for us?
Yep. Yeah, in my opinion, it does. Yeah, what I would probably tell you and talk to your attorney in all sincerity, because I don't have the attorney-client relationship. I represent the county. But in my opinion, if you wanted to make it safe procedurally, you'd probably consider when and where y'all do what you want to do. But you need to vote to set aside the prior vote just to be safe. Comply with that statute, come on back. You've already done it. You don't have to do anything different. You already know how you vote. Just re-vote after that time and you're good if no petition is filed and any five percent of the registered voters within the school district will do that.
So the motion to enter into an agreement with first option, we should rescind that?
Whatever your agreements were, which I can't remember off the top of my head exactly what the verbiage was, but I believe it was initially, yes, it was the lease purchase through First National. It was, uh, bid through, first option, pardon me, uh, bid through whatever your
Well, you'll see in Sands.
Yeah, and then, you know, those just, again, when it comes to fundamental rights and the issue of due process, you do not want to have chalk on your cleats at the end of the game. Set aside what you've previously done on May twelfth. Comply with the statute, comply with the notice, come back in thirty days. If they don't get a petition or file and it's gotta be a valid petition, there's ways that you can contest that too. But if they can't do that, you come back in here, you do exactly what you did when you could go and you're done.
So at this time, we don't know if there'll be a primary, whether the school board election city, that takes up to four candidates filing. We'll know that soon because that's the first
January, June second.
Second. If we run this out thirty days, so say we put it in this paper, May twenty-eighth and June fourth, my calculation, I don't know, I think it's roughly around, around July fourth. For us to put something on the primary, statute says, we, if the county, so Laura has to post that in the paper on or before June tenth. That's a two-stick. Well, we won't know about if this runs through, what you're suggesting. Are we able to do that? Because by July fourth, if there is enough voters that petition it, we could have it on the primary, not wait till November. So if it does pass, these kids can play baseball and softball on that.
I'll have to look into it. The short answer is, I don't know.
But you follow, I mean, could you
I think I follow. You're questioning whether or not the final is gonna wind up for you to be able to get through if you have a vote or if you don't get a vote, to be able to get through so that your juniors this year are be able to play for it on next year, which I know is one of your goals.
Well, and cost. I mean, the, the construction companies would hold them for probably their cost through August. I doubt November. Because then to put it on the November ballot, we have to do the same thing, but it's by September first. We'd have plenty of time to work with Laura on that after roughly July fourth, if we saw that petition came through or not. But I'm just curious if we, even if the board chooses to do, see what you're suggesting, but could we go ahead? Or do we have to wait for?
I think what he's trying to say is, can we draft the resolution, give it to Laura, have her publish it, even if we don't know if they're gonna get, if, if, if there's gonna be enough signatures to force a vote.
So you're Even if we don't even know there's a
If there is a primary.
Yeah, or, and, and if we don't know there's a primary.
So you're trying to position yourself to be able to vote early if at all possible?
Yes. Well, we don't miss these statutes.
Yes. It saves us a ton of money.
The short answer is, I don't know. That's the first one I've had that question on this conversation. I don't know.
I heard the library costs, I don't know if this is true or not, it was around twenty thousand dollars for a special election.
Well, it wouldn't be a special election though, right?
Yeah, this would not cost.
Right.
Not, if, if you put it on primary or general, it's free.
Right.
It's only, it only costs you money if you put it on a special election.
But if there's not a primary.
Pat's, you're, what you're saying is, if, if we didn't have, if we didn't have the primary, have a special election.
I'm just saying, I already cost twenty thousand dollars and you can do that if you desire.
Is that, is that what?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll tell you all again, I'm more than happy to help in terms of campaigning in any way, shape or form. I'm happy to put out a press release as far as what I believe to be, not, obviously not as county attorney, but just as an individual, I'm happy to say this is what I believe the undisputed facts are. As best I can. I'm happy to do that. Um, but that being said, I also told Mr., uh, Foot as well as Mr. Bierman, for the county attorney to be involved in y'all's business, it's gonna have to touch on fundamental right, in my opinion. This touches on due process. This touches on voting. Please, when you think about what I've told you this evening, keep that in mind because I have to defer towards the people on pretty much anything involved. But that's what brings me out from under my little block and away from prosecuting all of your criminals to come down here to ruin your evening is that this is a voting issue. It's a due process issue. If you're touching on a fundamental right, I gotta come out.
And I think, could you share with the board, I mean, obviously, I know you shared that you've sent it to, uh, go walk and that could take six to nine months and I understand that.
Yeah.
Um, if the board chooses not to do that and move forward, what is that timeline as far as your actions and what would that potentially look like? I don't know if that was quite, like, what would, so if, if we move forward with our interpretation that we haven't, you know, violated anything, and I'm not saying they are, but they have to make a decision obviously. So what does that, then, what does your office do if they move forward with this? And what the timeline does that look like?
If I find out that you If I find out that y'all are moving forward, at that point, I believe that my ethical duty is to move forward with the case. I already told you that this is about as conflicted as I've ever get gotten, and so I don't know that I have a choice, I'm gonna call the AG's office, I'm gonna tell them I got this issue, and I think I need you to handle it. From there, I can't tell you what happens. If for some reason they say that we're not gonna get involved in it, then unfortunately, I think I'm duty bound to file it, or you receive a copy of it. In terms of service, I was looking at that. You're, you know, as well, it'd be a temporary injunction, now, I have other options, I have other avenues, and they're more detrimental. I'll pass on them, but I'll just file a temporary injunction in the general sense under sixty-nine oh one, then a temporary injunction under sixty-nine oh five. I haven't specifically looked at whether or not I'm under statute of limitations, in terms of if I have to serve you within two weeks or thirty days, I didn't find anything pressing in terms of a statute of limitations for when I get, when I have to file. But what would happen is, and I need to look more into it, but I'm guessing that I would probably have to send a copy of the petition, as well as everything else, to whatever the main address, who was where school board is, which I'm guessing is here. I'd have to send one to Mr. Foot as the president, and I'm not sure if I'd have to serve you as well, Dr. Bierman, but I probably would just have, but it's caution. When it comes to the law, I'm very cautious on things like that.
So we could continue until the court case or that you file?
Until he files an injunction.
Yeah, so that's all injunction.
Then we're required to stop. I'm not saying, I'm just trying to be clear.
He's just trying to get all the options.
So if we serve the papers, we stop, or that's just serving that we're going to have a court date, and it's after the judge decides, I'm just trying to, so which one of those is it? Soon as we receive the papers, we're required to stop, or you're telling us there's a court date in August, we need to attend and pay up, and then that judge decides if we stop the project or not?
Depends, the form of the petition that I would have to file would be a request for a injunction, as well as a temporary injunction. If the judge agrees to temporary injunction, our work stops right then and there. Okay, if the judge waits, which I don't, honestly, I would not, I probably would have an offensive side of T R O. But if he doesn't, then you can keep on going. I'd be very concerned if he did.
I think just saying that as a school board member, we have qualified immunity. Until we get outside of what is, an attorney has advised us to do, realize you're not our attorney. But you are speaking to this from a legal standpoint. I just think it'd be hugely detrimental to move forward and not try and cure this now. I'm thankful that we're looking at this now and not three months from now, after everything's fine. We have, you know, contracts with a contractor, we have money borrowed. It would not be good.
If I was your enemy, I could have handled this far differently. There is no doubt, and it wouldn't have been hard, and it would have been fine, I'll come through with it. That being said, I also spoke with Mr. Foot and Dr. Bierman about this, and I confer with what Mr. Apple just said, generally speaking, you have qualified immunity, and as a general principle, I've already said, I don't think that I have determined any sight or any, any ill will, any maliciousness, I, there's nothing, y'all are trying to build baseball fields. There's nothing, there's nothing evil about that. Generally speaking, I don't think that you would likely to be looking at attorney's fees as punishment, or various other financial costs. Generally speaking, the problem is you're on notice now, and there's a chance that the court could look at it and say, well, you knew this. So some extent, unfortunately, I've unintentionally put you in a position where there's not gonna be much, any place to hide. It's not exactly my intent, but it's either that or something.
That's the world we live in.
It's unfortunate, because it doesn't have to be, that's, I think that's what's so hard about that, because it doesn't have to be like.
It, it would be nice if the, if the, I mean, you know, the way, the way we, we read that law. We thought we were fully within the scope, you know, if it said facilities instead of buildings.
Oh, I agree.
And you and I talked about that.
Yeah.
Then it'd be a little more clear, but, you know, but sometimes the laws is clear as mud.
Well, it most definitely is, and I have requested that advisory opinion, and no matter what I'm getting, I could not possibly care less when anybody tells me I'll get that, I'll share that with you, but when I get it, I'm getting that. I think somebody needs to answer that question.
And what, what is that part where you ask them for advice?
That's where I specifically posed the question to the attorney general's office, and this is relatively unique in this, most people don't do advisory opinions, that's what we call it, it's an, it's an opinion of what they think might happen in the future, most states just flat out don't do it, judges will flat out tell you not, I ain't doing it. I contacted the attorney general's office and followed the procedure to specifically request a advisory opinion on how this process, this baseball complex, would be interpreted. In the context of land and buildings, specifically buildings.
And how long does that typically take, or is it, that does take six to nine months?
Well, what I've been told is up to six, is what I've been told, I've never gotten an advisory opinion, there's only six on this whole statute in the thirty-five years that it's existed. I, but I'd like to know the answer, even if I'm somehow wrong, I'm sure that I am.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Harding? I'm glad he cleared this up, I mean, it's confusing when you read, like I say, read legal documents, it's.
And I do appreciate you coming, I, I don't like what you told us, but, but I mean, I do appreciate you standing here in a room where you're probably the minority doing this.
Yeah, I'll say, Mr. Harding's been nothing but gracious, he was welcoming Dr. Bierman and I over to his office, he explained everything to us, and he offered to come over here and meet with the board to explain it to the entire board. Because obviously, he's a lawyer, we are not, and so I thank you for taking time out of your evening and being in a very uncomfortable situation. To give us your legal advice, I mean, it's not really advice, where you stand as far as how, how to interpret this statute.
It's my job, it's a hard part, but it's my job. The other thing is, at least as far as the phone calls, unfortunately, I doubt that I'm gonna be lucky enough to never have to come here again, if it's okay with you, I'll just contact you if I have an issue in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you, you're very helpful, thank you very much.
Anybody has any questions, please, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one thing I'd just like to say with this many people in the room, that, you know, if, if this does turn into something where there's a petition to be signed. I hope that everyone in this room that has now heard the facts takes them, and that you're the steward for the truth and the facts about what's happening. Because, I mean, as we know, the narrative so far has, has not been the truth, and it has not been factual. So when your neighbor or someone else starts talking about it, or you're online and people are talking about it, you guys know the facts, you know where to find the link to this meeting tonight. Because if, if it goes to a petition, that's the only way that we're going to, to beat this.
Or if you're unsure of the facts, contact one of us, because we'll give you the facts.
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah, I would contact probably Jim or to start with, yeah. But I do, I think that's so important, that everyone in this room carries the facts with them tonight, because that, that's gonna be the big killer here, if we're not careful.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I move we go into executive session with the superintendent. I'm gonna move we go into executive session with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and legal counsel to discuss pending legal matter and obtain legal recommendations pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged to in the attorney-client relationship. Under coma, and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at, I wanna say nine-thirty.
I second it.
So moved and seconded to go into executive session, is there any further discussion?
I have one more comment.
Yes.
I'm really sorry I'm being a pain in the neck, but I think it's important, we didn't say this in the meeting, but I think it's important that everyone understands that regardless of if the ball fields happen or not, our capital outlay stays at eight mils. So regardless of if we build ball fields or we don't build ball fields, eight mils is where our capital outlay stays. I, I think it's important that everybody understands that. Sorry.
Any, any other discussion?
Vos?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Foot?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studerville?
Yes.
And Pisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do I call Jim?
That's fine.
You better call Brian, because my phone's not working.
Okay, just give me a call in about thirty seconds. Thank you.
All right, Callan.
Are we ready? I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and legal counsel to discuss pending legal matter and obtain legal recommendations pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma on an open meeting when we resume in the boardroom at ten o'clock.
I second it.
The move is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
I move to go back into executive session with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and legal counsel to discuss pending legal matter and obtain legal recommendations pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma in an open meeting when we resume in the boardroom at 10 o'clock.
I second it.
The moved and seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
Bose?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studebauer?
Yes.
And Pizdel?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President.
Okay, do we have a motion to table the actions from the May meeting?
So I moved the table action items five point two, five point three and five point four from the May 12, two thousand twenty five board meeting to be reconsidered at the regularly tentatively regularly scheduled board meeting for July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to table action items five point two, five point three and five point four from the May twelve twenty five board meeting to be reconsidered at the regularly scheduled board meeting tentatively scheduled for seven fourteen twenty five. Is there any further discussion?
Boz?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Foot?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yeah.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now do we have a motion for the resolution?
Let me give you, I move to publish resolution number five two one two zero five.
No, five two one two zero two.
Two zero two five. Let me start that again. I move to approve resolution number five two one two zero two five to be published in the Miami County Republic once a week for two consecutive weeks.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to publish resolution number five two one two zero two five in the Miami County Republic for two, or for once a week for two consecutive weeks. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Foot?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn our May twenty first, two thousand twenty five special board meeting at ten oh four P M. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the May twenty fifth, first, two thousand twenty five special Board of Education meeting at ten oh four P M. Is there any further discussion?
Boz?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Foot?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.